I call the meeting to order for the October 24th study session. Madam Clerk, roll call.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Avery has an excused absence.
Wonderful. Let's roll into current business. First item is clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilmember Kleiman, do you need clarification?
I do not.
Councilmember Stapleton?
I have none.
Councilmember Grant?
None.
Councilmember Yagan?
I do not.
Councilmember Avery? Oh, not here. And Mayor Protem? Mayor Avery's not here. And I have none as well. We are going to jump ahead very quickly before I go on to study session two and bring up Representative Janet Nguyen on the 36th Senate District. And she's going to provide us with a legislative update. Thanks, Janet. Whatever one you feel more comfortable at.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember. Before I start, though, I do want to wish our Mayor Protem a belated happy birthday. I heard the party went well.
I found out about it, yeah.
And then I also heard that you don't like surprises as well. Again, happy birthday. I thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. I just want to thank you for allowing me the time to just provide you an annual update from the California State Legislature. As your Senator, I'm proud and honored to serve as Newport Beach's voice in the State Senate and to fight for initiatives that help build a better and stronger, stronger and safer community. I'm here this evening because I believe it is my responsibility to keep you all informed on both this past legislative session and the work that I've been doing in Sacramento on your behalf. I currently represent a little over a million people, over 20 communities, which includes cities, unincorporated areas, and also communities itself. So we start at the very top tip, which is Los Angeles County, three cities, Artesia, Hawaiian Garden, and Cerritos. Then we head into Orange County, and it starts with Brenna Park, which is half of Brenna Park, half of Brenna Park, La Palma, Cypress, Los Alamos, Rosmore, Stanton, 90% of Garden Grove, Westminster, Midway City, and Fountain Valley. And then we have the entire coast of Orange County, the 41 miles, starting at Seal Beach, Huntington Beach, Newport Beach, Laguna Beach, Dana Point, Capistrano Beach, and then San Clemente. So from the very, from the LA border to the San Diego border is our district. So essentially, half of the cities in Orange County is in my Senate district. As you are aware, as a Senator, I am in Sacramento nine months of the year. Usually, we are there every week, Monday through Thursday. And we do come back, you know, for council meetings, et cetera, on Tuesday or Wednesday as well, but then I turn around immediately back to Sacramento. Session ended this last, this year on September 14th. The Governor had up to October 14th to sign, sign, veto, or do nothing with his, with the bill. If he does nothing with the bill, the bill will be enacted without his signature. I currently represent you on eight committees in Sacramento. Vice Chair of Business and Professions, I'm Vice Chair of Senate Health, I'm Vice Chair of Elections and Constitutional Amendment, I'm Vice Chair of Insurance. I'm also on Banking, Transportation, Environmental Quality, and Governmental Organizations. And I'm on a lot of select committee, joint committees, special committees. But two that I wanted to bring up that involves more of the coastal area of my district is I'm on low sand, which involves the rail, which is based in San Clemente that keeps on collapsing because of erosion. And that rail connects to San Diego and also to LA as well. The other one I'm on is Fisheries and Aquaculture. I am the first Orange County legislator to be appointed to this committee. We are, we were hoping to have a, the first hearing in Orange County from that committee this year, but we are now, it's going to be moved into, it's going to happen in 2024. Fisheries and Aquaculture oversees the entire coast of California. Anything that involves the ocean and part of where the state owns and all the coastal beaches is, involves the Fisheries and Aquaculture Committee. This year alone, there's over 2,600 bills that were introduced. 1,700 bills came from the Assembly, 891 came from the Senate, Senate, a little over 1,001 to the Governor, and he signed of 1,046, he signed 890 bills, and he vetoed 156. During this past session, we've worked to, you know, address many of the issues facing the state impacting our neighborhood, neighborhoods directly from homelessness, public safety, to housing, mental health. I'm working to enact legislation that tackles what matters most to you, your family, our businesses, and our community. I'm going to touch base on a few bills. I'm not going to go on for all the 1,000 bills. So if you or your staff or anybody who's watching this or listening wants some update on any of the legislation that has passed, please give our office a call, and I'll give, I'll provide that phone number in a little bit. Bills that involve homelessness. Several bills this year, proposals were to audit county and local government on homelessness spending. Because the concerns we in the state is facing is that there's been over $20 billion that's been spent it, from the state to local government. But yet, when I go around my district, I've asked people, no one can tell me that, oh, it's working. There's no homeless problem. No one can say that. So the more money we're spending, where are they going? And actually, this morning, I attended the, the Orange County Mental Health and Homeless Select Committee in Brenna Park, Assemblywoman Chair, Sharon Corksilver hosted it, and they talked about homelessness issues there. One of the things that I just learned today is that the County of Orange, Mental Health Department has over a billion dollars, a billion dollars their annual budget. Annual budget, a billion dollars to help homeless, homelessness slash mental health in Orange County. The question we ask is, where has it gone? What have you done? What has worked and what hasn't worked? And so those are the kind of things that we're tackling. Education is another one that I want to highlight. AB 1467, which will now require all sports youth organizations to have a defibrillator on site. Most people have heard about LeBron Jones, I mean James' son who almost died at UCLA. If there wasn't a defibrillator, I've actually been involved in the defibrillator issue for over 20 years. The city that I was first elected to City Council, to this day, for the last 20 years, I still sponsor defibrillators in that city. Whether we sponsor from 20 years ago, every public facility and every school has a defibrillator donated by the Rotary Club. And every three to five years, we have to raise the money, or I would donate, I would help raise the money or donate the money to help recharge these defibrillators. So now I'm glad that it's enacting across the state of California. Public safety is a really big issue this year for us. Obviously, you heard of the smash and grabs issues that's going on. Almost every mall in my district, from Cerritos Mall to all the way down to San Clemente, has been hit with smash and grab. There's not been one mall or one, I mean, there's so many jewelry shops that has been hit this year. We need to make sure that there's consequences when you commit a crime in California. The other issues that we've been working on closely is, has to do with fentanyl. As you know, fentanyl is a number one killer to young adults ages of 18 to 45. We are literally watching a whole generation pass by us and vanish. So we are hosting town hall meetings all across my district, and we're hoping to also, we are working with the city and some of you on the dais to host a fentanyl town hall where we will educate the parents and students. And we're also going to train and provide free distribution of Narcan to the individuals so that they can always arm themselves. Because fentanyl, one pill kills within four minutes. And with Halloween coming up around the corner, I ask everybody to be very cautious. I have a 10-year-old and a 12-year-old. They still love Halloween and trick-or-treating, but fentanyl is now becoming look-alike like Skittles and also Smarty Candies as well. Not trying to specifically target those two candies, but those were the ones that they have been making that looks exactly like Skittles. So I would caution parents, making sure that you check these candies and making sure that those fentanyl, because fentanyl itself kills an individual, and it only takes one milligram. One milligram is one grain of sand. The other one that also passed, oh, then, so my bill, I've worked on for three years, which just got signed by the Governor, which will add sentencing enhancement for anyone who possesses fentanyl with intent to sell one kilo. One kilo is 10,000 pills. 10,000 pills will kill half a million people in my district. And so it's, we've worked on it for three years. Actually, it was something that Senator, former Senator Pat Bates worked on prior to my taking over that legislation, and we are proud and excited that it was signed into law this year. The other part is that SB 234 has been signed into law. That bill itself will now require Narcan in public places, including schools, colleges, concert venues, amusement parks, and stadiums going forward. The other one is SB 14, which is to make it a three-strike law when it comes to sex trafficking minor. If you don't believe it's happening in our neighborhoods and across our county and across our state and across our country, you need to think twice. They are kidnapping our children, underage, and making them into sex trafficking and prostitution. The Governor has also signed that bill. Just to conclude, I want to refer my commitment to serving you here and the families of the city of Newport Beach. In addition, we've worked closely with the city and some of you when it came to some of the flood, flood, the flooding that's happening in Newport Beach. We work with other cities as well, because it's, it's coming across the district, especially with erosions happening in all of our, our cities and all of our beach areas. We appreciate your support in helping us when we work together in honoring Officer Nicholas Vella from Huntington Beach, and also for your unveiling of the Marina Park Memorial plaque on, for him and his family as well. We've made, we've hosted tons of town halls as well with Assemblywoman Diane Dixon, and some of you have also attended and participated. So I look forward to working more. Like I mentioned, we are working on a tentative date, November 29th, to host our fentanyl town hall here in Newport Beach. Our staff is here to assist in any way. If you have any issues with the state or any other issues, please feel free to reach out to us, and that goes with the constituents as well. Our office is in Newport, I mean, in Huntington Beach. The reason for that is because Huntington Beach to Artesia is about 50 minutes without traffic, and from Huntington Beach to San Clemente is about an hour and 10 minutes without traffic. So we really try to make it as central as we can to hopefully allow everybody an opportunity to be at our office. Our office address is 301 Main Street, Suite 212 in Huntington Beach, and our phone number is 714-374-4000, 374-4000. And again, thank you for what you do. Thank you for always being available and assisting our office and traveling to Sacramento and advocating on behalf of Newport Beach, and also telling us what you need from us and how we can be helpful in being the partnership with the city and the state. And so I appreciate your time, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Senator Nguyen. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, just real quickly, just wanted to also say thank you. I can tell you that all of us have had really good experiences working with your office, and so I appreciate everything you're doing. And I also appreciate your staff. They've been nothing but communicative and working really well with all of our residents when they call up. So, thank you. And then we also later tonight have a couple of items on calendar to decide whether we're going to take formal opposition to ACA 1 and ACA 13. I know you were, you voted against both of those in the state legislature, so just wanted to say thank you for those votes.
Those, those bills are going to affect Prop 13, and it's going to start increasing property value, property taxes all across the state, and it will be on the ballot next year.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Senator.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Moving on to study session two, the discussion about the Newport Beach Municipal Code and City Council Policy Updates. Tara?
So I'm going to go ahead, I'm going to go ahead and start things off talking about the municipal code and council policies. So just about a year ago, the City Council formed an ad hoc committee and directed the boards and commissions to also review the municipal code and council policies. There we go. I'm going to primarily be talking about the municipal code provisions and a little bit about council policies, and Tara's going to talk about the council policies tonight. In regards to the municipal code, the ad hoc committee primarily focused on the standardized provisions. They really noticed that there weren't a lot of standardization in the code, and so they focused on trying to put provisions in Title I that could then be carried through the code and not repeated in each chapter. The ad hoc committee also focused on protecting the city from liability and limiting unnecessary language and updating language that had become stale. So in regards to the standardization of provisions, this is in Title I. It has a lot of definitions in it that are then carried through the rest of the municipal code. But sometimes the chapters would redefine the same terms or define them slightly differently. So one thing the ad hoc committee is recommending is that use more definitions at the beginning of the code and then eliminate repetitive or conflicting definitions throughout the rest of the municipal code. Another area that the ad hoc committee looked at was the standardization of citations. There wasn't a lot of standardization there related to citations, so we went through the code, standardized those. And then we also added a general provision that allows for the incorporation of changes to the state or federal laws over time. In the code, the way it's written now, oftentimes it would give the code section and then say, as may be amended, or something of that nature. So we reduced all that language. And then, in the code, it also gives, often gives people authority to act on, in different situations. For instance, it might say the Public Works Director has authority to issue a permit for outdoor dining. But then it would provide that, that, you know, the Public Works Director can, can give that, designate someone else to take action on behalf of the Public Works Director. So rather than having all these issues with designees kind of carried throughout the code, in Title I, we provided that, you know, if you're, if you're given authorization to act, then you can designate someone on your behalf to act, and then you have to keep a list of those people on file with the city clerk. And then there are a couple other just general standardized provisions. CPI adjustments and surface of process are kind of handled differently throughout the code, so they standardized those provisions. And then I think there was a, there was a lot of discussion about other ways to protect the city from liability. And for instance, one way the city can reduce risk and ensure that, is by ensuring that notice of the time to take action to file for judicial review is given in accordance to the law. There are certain state laws that say you have to give notice if you're going to invoke those provisions. So we added provisions related to judicial review. Insurance, in many places in the code, there are very specific provisions about insurance. We basically put some general provisions in Title I and then got rid of all that specificity throughout the code and just referred people to the risk manager who can keep up to date with current insurance requirements. Indemnification requirements in Title I, it made a lot of references to sort of your land use entitlements and indemnification related there, too. We brought in the indemnification requirements to note that it can be added as a condition of approval to other, you know, licenses or permits. And then one other section in Title I that was, needed a lot of work was related to the authority of public officers. It was really confusing about who had authority to enforce the code and what circumstances. We kind of streamlined that and they're recommending adopting a change there so that everyone knows who has authority to enforce the codes as well as keeping a list on file with the, with the city clerk. Next was eliminating unnecessary language from the code. So throughout the code, there were over 20 severability provisions and 20 penalty provisions. All that could be handled up in Title I as opposed to having it repeated over and over again throughout the code. So we have that in Title I, but we didn't carry it through and basically eliminate it from all the individual chapters. Department Directors, you'd have a situation where a department director in Title II would have multiple titles. It'd be, you know, Public Works Director and also City Engineer and also Municipal Operations Director. And I think it was kind of a shortcut that people did when they, when the job titles changed, so they wouldn't have to go through the rest of the municipal code and basically redefine it for one position. So the ad hoc committee is recommending that there be one primary title for, for the person holding that position, and we went through and eliminated all the other titles for, for directors. And then there were several provisions throughout the code that just aren't applicable anymore, didn't contemplate kind of current circumstances. You know, for instance, there's a provision that prevented the delivery of alcohol in some situations. I don't think it was contemplating that people would be getting, you know, groceries delivered at home. Parking meters at City Hall, we don't have parking meters here, and there's no longer a library fund. So we kind of went through the code and eliminated a lot of the provisions that weren't really necessary anymore because of changed circumstances or they were outdated. And then this is where the council spent a lot of time is, is on updating provisions. You know, for instance, the provisions that relates to emergencies, they noticed that the definitions didn't line up with state law. So they made some modifications to the definitions so that they do line up with state law. And then there were a lot of lessons learned during the pandemic, so there were some provisions added that related to, you know, kind of who has authority to act, when you review an emergency, basically putting in exceptions for people when they're fulfilling their jobs as part of the emergency. Also updated provisions related to ambulances. They contemplated the city contracting out for ambulance services. That's not the case here. Fire Department provides all the emergency ambulance services, so we cleaned that up. Taxi cabs, you know, that section didn't reflect basically your Ubers and your rideshares. So we updated that, those provisions, and we also added provisions that shifted it to local regulation. A few years ago, the county shifted everything to the cities as opposed to the counties doing the local regulation. We don't actually have any taxi cab companies in town, but we added provisions in case, in case we ultimately end up do having them. And then we updated the provisions regarding smoking. Those still contemplate as smoking in the workplace, which is primarily covered by state law, and there are various provisions throughout the code, so we consolidated those. Provisions related to animals, they just hadn't been updated in a long time, so there's different types of service animals and, and for persons with disabilities, so we added those to the code. And then there were, there weren't exceptions for the use of, you know, dogs and horses during, for police use, or maybe horses during special events. So we updated the code to basically reflect the current circumstances related to animals. And then there are a few provisions related to vehicle regulation that were just outdated that are referencing old manuals, so we updated the vehicle regulation sections. So those are the primary from the ad hoc committee, what they were recommending. They also received recommendations from the boards and commissions and primarily the Planning Commission. And I'll just go through these really quickly. One, one item the Plan Commission is recommending is, is to make the process for requesting residential building records voluntary as opposed to mandatory. Right now, when you go to do a real estate transaction on a home that's previously occupied, you have to go through this residential building records process. So rather than making that mandatory, they're talking about making that voluntary, which should speed up real estate transactions, be less cumbersome. It will probably result in approximately $150,000 less revenue to the city, but it definitely should help, help realtors be able to close deals quicker. Plan Commission is also recommending as far as takeout service, fast and casual. Right now, there's a requirement that if you are within 500 feet of a residential zoning district, you have to get a minor use permit. They're recommending changing that to 100 feet, primarily because it doesn't come up very often, but it is sort of a barrier to getting into, getting into your business and getting it started. They're also recommending as far as the bluff overlay districts that they just, in Title 20, they just reference Title 21 and take them out of that section. It's not really changing anything substantively, they'll still be in Title 21, which is probably the most important place for those to be. And then conversion or demolition of affordable housing, Plan Commission is recommending deleting chapters 20.34 and 21.34. The requirements in state law don't apply to the city, and so they're just recommending getting rid of those chapters. And then in regards to the PBNR Commission, they're recommending that a provision be added related to the planting of parkway trees. And then one other thing I should have mentioned, when we were doing the updates for the municipal code, it required us to do a brief change to council policy L 21, which relates to outdoor dining. And when I got into looking at it, there were a lot of provisions that were repetitive, so there's really no substantive changes there. I just rewrote a lot of it because it was duplicative, so we eliminated the repetitive provisions. And that's primarily the updates related to the municipal code. And I'll go ahead and turn things over to Tara to talk about changes to council policies.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Part of this exercise was for a set amount of boards, committees, and commissions to look at the council policy manual. Five of those did review the policy manual, and the most substantive changes came back from the Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Committee, Commission, excuse me. They had changes to B1, B12, 13, 14, and 16 that I won't go into, because they were primarily clarifying language, updating language. I will touch upon a few of their more substantive changes. Under Council Policy B3, which pertains to cosponsored events, they did eliminate language that talked about cosponsorship of events there because the commission felt that that's already covered in your council policy A12, when that's the policy that governs our community events, our special event grants, and other grants. Same thing for the council policy B6, Newport Theater Arts Center, there was a clause in there that talked about a waiver of fees. The commission also felt that that should be covered by council policy A12, so they eliminated that language. Council Policy B8, this is simply aligning the local school surf league competition requirements with city department policy. So that's what the changes in B8 cover. B17, Parks, Facilities, and Recreation Program donations, they removed a certain style of bench from that policy to, also to align the policy with our donation catalog. And then we get into the G policies, which is more of the general services policies. There, they update the list of dedicated city trees. That's an exhibit to council policy G1. In policy G6, that's the maintenance and planting of parkway trees. They add a requirement that if someone plants a tree in the parkway, there needs to be irrigation to that parkway tree. And then in council policy L6, which pertains to encroachments in the public rights of way, they added requirements related to artificial turf in parkways. So if someone is to put artificial turf in parkways, they also have to ensure that the, as proposed, that the tree is still irrigated and that there's a spacing between the tree and the artificial turf, amongst some other requirements. I should also note that the council ad hoc determined that the recommendations that came from a board or commission should be forwarded to you in their, as that committee recommended. So that is what you're seeing tonight. The ad hoc made no changes to the commission's recommendations. And that is the conclusion of our presentation.
Wonderful. Mayor Protem?
Yep, a few things. First off, really excited about this, which I recognize what kind of person that makes me, but I'm very excited about this. And I, we started, so we started this actually, gosh, six years ago when we were looking through the council policies and realized that there was a lot of information in the council policies that needed some updating. There was still a council policy that told us, if you're going to vote yes, press the green button. If you're going to vote no, press the red button, which applied entirely to the old council chambers and not the new ones. And there are a lot of things that just needed to be updated. So when we went through and really, really took a good look at it, we, I think we deleted somewhere close to like 30,000 words out of our council policies, and I have not seen us miss a beat. So going through this one, we knew that there was going to be some updated needed. Didn't realize how much updating. I mean, right now, at least the red lines that we've proposed shows a deletion of around 20,000 words out of the municipal code. I'll tell you, there's still a lot of words in the municipal code, but that's, that's a good start. And then there were, there was a lot in there. I mean, that's what happens when you're a 100-year-old city. Things just kind of accumulate, and sometimes you just need to look at it. So one of the things that our city attorney mentioned was needing to look at rideshare and make sure that we've updated the code on that. There is an arguable point to be made that our section 5.12 actually prohibits Uber in our city. I think that we should probably make sure that's not the case. But anyway, my point is, there's a lot in there that just needs to be updated and, and more streamlined. And so we've certainly seen a lot of that. And so I just want to say thank you to Councilmember Kleiman, Councilmember, or Mayor Blom for the work done on this, to all of our staff. And, you know, I've already apologized to her in advance, but our city clerk, when this comes forward, having to read all of the municipal code titles when, when this gets to her, my goodness. Anyway, I appreciate it. So there's a lot here. We've given Mr. Moser a lot to work with, so we'll, I'll get out of the way.
Councilmember Grant?
Well, I also want to recognize the absolutely Herculean effort that was made by staff and by the ad hoc committee in accomplishing this revision. I especially want to thank our city attorney, Erin Harp, who sat with me for a long time to go through all of my questions and thoughts and additions, and so I've got a very large comfort level after all of that. And I'm just literally looking forward to, you know, now that we've vetted this document, hearing back from the community and knowing that it'll serve, you know, our community well and be more consistent, more reliable for everyone to work with. So thank you so much.
Councilmember Kleiman?
Yeah, I'll just kind of echo some of those sentiments. Tremendous amount of gratitude to staff for no small undertaking with this. It, it did definitely need some major It did definitely need some major cleanup and it'll be nice to bring it current and consistent with, with state law as well. So also thank you to my ad hoc committee colleagues and apologies to the rest of our colleagues up here. I know it's not a small amount of information to digest and, as well as the public having to dissect it and absorb it, so we, we understand that.
Let's move on to public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Do we need, oh, we go to public on this, that was my bad. Let's go to public comments on this study session piece. That was my bad.
Mayor Blom, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I can't even begin to comment on this in the three minutes that are allowed. But despite that, the first thing I will point out is in my written comment, I mentioned I didn't see a lot of other examples of cities or states repeating numbers, which would eliminate a lot of stuff that is being recommended. Since then, I discovered that the state of Arkansas, that is their style, to write a number two and then put in parentheses two. And I discovered also the county of Orange does that, and the city of Costa Mesa, and I think one or two other in Orange County, but I don't think it's a good idea. I need to say that as the memo, I think, says, certainly as the resolution that created the ad hoc committee said, its sole purpose was to reduce, make recommendations about deleting and reducing language and the advisability of applying sunset provisions for new or existing code provisions. I don't see any sunset provisions being recommended. Perhaps they're in here somewhere. I saw some deleting and reducing of language. I also saw a lot of new policies being written into our code, kind of at random here and there, that somebody thought was a good idea. I have since 2009 been attentively watching badly written laws getting enacted in this city and elsewhere. And so I, I think it's, we're not allowed to ask questions, it's fair to ask. I think though, what's the plan now? Is this going to be a single 500-page ordinance that people have to search through it to find what are the substantive changes and what are cleanups or restatements? I thought this was just going to be a restatement, 500 pages restating it without changing the meaning. Maybe that's okay, but 500 pages with little nuggets buried on this and that page, I don't think that's a good idea. I'll try to point out just one of those. Oh, incidentally, if you wanted to delete words, the expression shall be is repeated 5,663 times in our municipal code. Almost all of those could be replaced with is or was. So that would save 5,000 words right there. I'm going to run out of time, so I can't tell you about this. But on page SS2-19, this is about changing the authority designate who can do things. The original code was authority of deputies. It's now changed to designated officials. That used to be, it could only be designated to a person authorized by law or ordinance. The new change, which I think like all of these changes need scrutiny, now allows any city director or employee to designate their duties, not their powers. They used to be able to designate powers, only duties, to any other city position or another person. It doesn't have to be a person designated by law. And there's a definition now in an obscure section, which nobody would know where to look for those definitions. It says what a person is, and it could be most anybody. Wouldn't you want them to designate at least to a city employee as it used to be? Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Any other public comments on this study session item?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Denise Oberman. I wanted to thank the ad hoc committee and staff for, I agree, was a Herculean effort. I did not have a relevant copy of Cliffs Notes and didn't have this document in time to really complete review. I only looked, was able to read approximately 200 pages of the document. So I'm not prepared to present any conclusions. I would just like to present some observations, the part I have had the opportunity to read. There is remaining some lack of clarity regarding organizational roles and responsibilities, and we do have a lot of significant policy areas in addition to minor cleanup that are ostensibly to be addressed in, in our code. For example, enforcement. It's not, it's not at all clear who is responsible, what, what needs to be enforced, what is the scope of infractions. And if this is in the latter 294 pages, I apologize. But based on what I've read, there, there is a lack of clarity. Who's responsible to enforce, for what purpose? And given that our city is, is grappling with, is grappling with the notion of regulation and related enforcement in so many different areas, I would ask that there be a more careful look at the organization to determine what the most appropriate process is and the roles and responsibilities. That's, that's all. I guess my one remaining comment for tonight would be that it would be great to have the opportunity to have another two weeks to 30 days to be able to review the remainder so we could provide comments that were thoughtful and thorough. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this item?
My name is Laura Curran. Thank you for your work. Thank you for council members who've told the public that this is happening. I would like to read it, and the question is, is there, where can a member of the public go to read the document? Because there is no document available with the agenda packet. It's a 500-page document, so is there an option with the city clerk to go and read it with the red lines? And I do appreciate the red lines are there because that enables us to follow the thought process. So, and secondly, as this goes forward, we would also ask you to think about code sections such as those regulating group homes, regulating the quality of life in the city, that the onus is not put on the residents to be the reporting and enforcement and investigation arm, that we start to create a more equal balance so that residents can enjoy the quality of life in the city without having to become enforcement arms on their own. And in some cases, I have observed progress. We'll see that progress continue. So that's my, those are my two comments. I'd like to go back to my question for the city clerk. When we can read the document.
Well, we'll go ahead and answer when you're all through.
I'm finished.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Mayor Potem, did you want to speak now, or do you want me to send that back to the?
Yeah, real quick. So the document is available on city website in a couple of locations, but the easiest one would actually be looking at the agenda. It has it in red line. Yes, you have plenty of time to look at this. That's sort of the point, actually. We, we put this out on the city website earlier than normal. We also, we also have this study session where we're not actually voting on this right now. And then, so the idea would be at the next council meeting, we would introduce this as a municipal code change, and then we'd have a second reading two weeks later, or two, I guess it probably is two weeks later. So this, given the scope of it, 100% understand the need to spend some time reading through this one. So that's why, as opposed to kind of a normal process where we would introduce and bring it up, we're providing, gosh, almost two months instead of, you know, the four weeks of, of it. So anyway, yep, understood completely, wanted to make sure that we, we had provided that. So, good points. Thanks.
Council member Grant.
I think that Laura is asking if there's a hard copy available, not an online copy. And I understand that request because I don't usually get a hard copy of the agenda. I usually do it electronically, but in this instance, it was very helpful. So I don't know if there's an answer for that question. Is it in the library or?
So we'll definitely make sure there's a hard copy available at the city clerk's office.
Perfect.
Any more public comments on this study session item? Seeing none. Nothing more up here as well. We'll get to go. Let's roll into public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Okay, and I can't speak anymore, so. Any public comments? And that was, I was just joking. Come on up. Agenda and non-agenda items.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This morning, I emailed a proposal letter to the city manager and CC'd all of you. The issue of, of recovery and assisted living facilities is a big issue, not just for Newport Beach, but probably every city in Orange County. So the thought of forming a coalition of Orange County cities, OCC, COCC, would be a brilliant idea for all city managers and the attorneys to brainstorm together to challenge the state and their mandates, which are forcing these for-profit companies within residential communities. Everyone chooses, chooses a city based on the quality of life they want and can afford. And to have the state sidestep cities by forcing these into residential, single-family zones is absurd. So a coalition could get all cities in Orange County together to challenge the state and at the same time to work with the state and the health agencies to determine, okay, we want to accommodate the demand, but we want to do it in a logical manner that puts it in a business, because it is a business. It's not a residential family. It's, it's a business. And so there are many solutions, and we can incorporate that kind of living within business parks and call it living parks. And San Diego is making progress using the state's new laws on how to accommodate low-cost housing. So looking at it as a master plan, the same way Don Bren built the city of Irvine, makes a lot of sense, so that each city is not struggling alone against the state. But work together, formulate a game plan on how to challenge the state to give back the, the control and the authority of zoning within each city. And then also say, okay, let's identify select places, business parks, that can accommodate these needs, and those should be located near transportation areas like buses, trains, because those are high-density residential businesses, and they should have access to buses and trains and things like that. So I would just encourage you to take the charge and be the first city to invite all the cities to come together, formulate a game plan to challenge the state, and to work with them on the concept of a master plan on putting these facilities within business parks. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker on agenda and non-agenda items. Feel free to come on up.
Good evening. I'm Ida Wolf. I've been here three times before on the statue of Ben Carlson. Could you pass these out? I have some signatures here that, that people in town want to remove that live here. Those, and these, and these. Please? Thank you. They want to put a bird bath in there. Ben Carlson is not a hero. It's an insult to the lifeguards, because all the lifeguards are very, very good. They can save people. And Ben Carlson did not save anyone that day. And I understand his father is a district attorney in Sacramento. So I, I don't know if it's an attorney business or, or what it is. But anyway, it should be removed so the kids can enjoy Newport. We would not have airplanes without birds. We would not have music without birds. When you read how much birds do for us, I was down there the other day, there were a lot of birds out. They come flying down on their bicycles, and they stop and slow down and enjoy the birds. But the birds have nowhere to get fresh water. We have taken the streams and everything from them. So they do have a bird bath in Huntington Beach. They've had it for years by the candy factory. It is very nice, very peaceful, and we do not need a graveyard down there. We need fun for the kids. Thank you.
Any other comments on non-agenda or agenda items? Come on up.
Hi, my name's Travis Haining, and I, I guess I wanted to start by thanking the city council and, and everyone involved who has been pushing back on the, the concentration of the group homes that are in our neighborhood. Again, it was, it was my house where the person that was imported from Indiana, a multiple felon, was sent to a detox center just a few doors down from my house, and he escaped. He was looking for a knife so he could kill the demons that he had caught, and he kicked open my door at 4:24 in the morning, and we had to defend ourselves. And this is, there's a lot of nuisances that these homes cause. The, the, we talk about traffic and smoking and noise and, and things like that. There's also a very real physical danger that is happening by importing these felons and these people who need real help into our neighborhoods. It's a real danger. I, I hope that, that my story is the worst story that ever happens, but it won't be if we allow these homes to keep coming in. You guys know, there's a, there's a home, so the, the person who escaped, that detox center is still operating, nothing changed, nothing happened, no new restrictions, nothing's changed. And they want to put a home in literally two doors down. It's less than 150 feet away. That's the definition of insanity to me. I know you guys are pushing back. I greatly appreciate it. Please keep it up. This is not just about a nuisance, this is real public health for all of us. So thank you for your efforts, I appreciate it. Please keep it up. And if there's something that we can do, if there's, I haven't received any feedback on things that, that we can do also, please let us know. We're on the same team. That, I don't want to put words in the city manager's mouth, but last time you basically said, hey, we're, we're all in support of this. We, we don't, we don't want this over-concentration to happen either. And so I appreciate that. If there's something that we can do, please let us know, we're on the same team. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers on agenda and non-agenda items? Feel free to head on up.
Mayor Blom, Mayor Potem O'Neil. My name is John Lamb, and I'm a member of the Board of Directors of the Harborview Community Association, the Port Streets. And you may be aware that we've been experiencing some rather unfortunate and dangerous events in our neighborhood over the last year or so. My wife and I have lived there for over 35 years, and we should feel safe in the evening to take a walk at night. We should feel safe from someone kicking on our front doors, safe from someone throwing firecrackers at us, riding e-bikes and bumping into us, harassing our children. We don't feel safe right now. We have had two community meetings in the past month. Thank you to Lieutenant Vinslet from the Police Department, he's come and conducted two of these meetings in our neighborhood. He and his colleagues have done a fine job in telling us what the police can do to help. We've had our, our attorneys there and helped us understand what we can do as a homeowners' association. But we need to do more because we still have these, these problems of the teens, especially the young teens, running over kids, throwing buckets of water on them, all kinds of things that are happening at the pavilions down the street. It's, it's, it's quite concerning. Now with Halloween coming up, we know there's going to be even more problems. Lieutenant Vinslet has done a wonderful job. He's going to arrange for three extra patrol cars for the neighborhood for, for Halloween. But we know we need a more comprehensive approach, and I'm not going to stand here and tell and tell you what laws you should be enacting or what you should be doing in our neighborhood. We just want to know that we have your support. We are willing to do whatever it takes from all the different vantage points, but we would like to get support of the council also, as well as the police, as well as our private guards, so that we can make our neighborhood safe again, because so many people feel unsafe now in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers on non-agenda or agenda items? Okay, well, thank you all that came out. We appreciate that. Mr. Harp, do you, prior to Mr. Harp making the close session announcements, do any council members have conflicts on this one?
Yes, I do on item two. I have investments in companies that are being represented.
Thank you. Ms. Harp, do you have a closed session announcement for us?
Yes, the city council adjourned a closed session to meet with legal counsel regarding two litigation matters titled Orange County Water District versus 3M Company and N Ray Aquies Film, Foaming, Foams Products Liability Litigation, and to meet with the city's real property negotiators regarding negotiations related to the property at 600 and 608 East Bluff Boulevard and 209 Washington Street, which is the Palm Street parking lot. That's all set forth on the agenda under items four A and B.
Thank you. We're recessed until 5:30. Call the meeting to order for the October 24 regular city council meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Avery has an excused absence.
Ms. Harp, do you have a closed session report?
Thank you, Mayor. There's no closed session report this evening.
Excellent. We're going to move on to the invocation by the Reverend Matthew Hambrick of the First United Methodist Church of Costa Mesa.
Thank you for having me. Let us pray. Most loving God, we come to you asking for wisdom as we seek to make decisions that benefit all who live in our community. May you pour out your spirit upon us gathered here that we would treat each other with kindness and grace, with a sense of common humanity, that we would see your goodness at work in this city. Help us to lead in the shadow of your guidance, seeking justice and loving mercy in all that we do. Bless this city of Newport Beach and all who live here. We pray this in the spirit of the one who created us. Amen.
Please join us in the pledge allegiance to our amazing country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible and just eternal. Thank you. Madam Clerk, notice to the public.
The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Thank you. Now's the time for council announcements, oral reports from council members, and committee activities, and the time for council members to request an A1 item. Councilmember Clyman, do you have any announcements or reports?
Yes, I do. Quick report. I attended the county's Commission to End Homelessness meeting, the Rose's Bakery 25th Anniversary Celebration, the grand opening of the beautiful new Pendry Hotel, and our quarterly aviation committee meeting. And since the senator was kicking us off with acknowledging birthdays, we have the mayor's upcoming birthday, and 60 never looked so good.
63, thank you. I'm aging like fine wine. Councilmember Stapleton?
Yeah, I've had a great two weeks. I want to just commend the Chamber of Commerce on the economic forecast that they hosted. It was attended by, I think, 400 people. It was an incredible, incredible event. Also attended the Newport Beach Film Festival, so congratulations to all those involved. I know that's a big effort in this community, so, that was fun to be out there and see our mayor running around from event to event, presenting and doing his thing. So, congrats on a great film festival. I also went to Jean Watt's Celebration of Life with a few other council members, and it was just a reminder of how fortunate we are to live in a city like this and have so many individuals who are willing to give back their time and volunteer to protect quality of life for our residents, and nothing, I mean, incredible legacy that she's left behind, and it was a great time to celebrate her life and all that she accomplished. I also attended the Pendry opening. That was an incredible party, I think almost 1,000 people, and just another opportunity to look at local investors who are continuing to reinvest in the community in Newport Beach. I want to congratulate Kevin Martin, Corey Kramer, Mario Morovic, and all the others that were involved in the first annual beach volleyball tournament that happened in District One on the beach by the Newport Pier. That was a home run. A lot of professional volleyball players out there, all raising good money for good causes as well. I was happy to see that one, so, that was a fun event and a great day and beautiful weather. Also, this Friday, the Citizen of the Year Dinner. We're going to honor our very own Laird Hayes. No one more deserving of that award than him. And then also, our Businessperson of the Year, Mr. Bob Olson, another local investor who's continued to invest in the community. So, terrific job to him, to both of them. And then on Saturday, there's a car show down near the Blacktop by Newport Elementary, hosted by the Knights of Columbus. So, hope to see you guys down there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Grant?
Councilmember Stapleton's right. The last few weeks in Newport have been, no better word than epic, with residents and businesses and visitors all coming together in support of our wonderful Newport Beach Film Festival, the grand opening of the Pendry Hotel, and the inaugural Newport Beach Volleyball Invitational, all great events and great support from our community. I also want to thank the Newport Chamber for bringing the best and the brightest from UCI and Chapman to present an economic forecast in our city, and also thank the CDM Chamber for bringing us together as a community at the meet and greet they had at Sherman Gardens. It was a wonderful evening. I was amazed at the pie-eating abilities of Councilmember Clyman. You'd be surprised, she is very good at judging pies. I want to recognize the Boys and Girls Club of Central Coast. That's our partner here in East Bluff. They had a ribbon-cutting on their new venture, which is called College Bound, and it offers college counseling services to youth in our community. It's a wonderful resource, and the Boys and Girls Club are really hitting it out of the park, not only in East Bluff, but all around the county. I also attended the Second Harvest Food Bank event this weekend, and they work with hundreds of distribution centers across the county to provide food security in our county. There's 350,000 people in our county that are food insecure. They did a wonderful event thanking all of the participating cities, which is basically all the cities in the county, and they gave us, the city of Newport Beach, this really nice key to the food bank, which I think should probably be presented to our city manager. So, I've got that for you, Grace, okay? Oh, might have broken, but, well, no, it's pretty substantial. It didn't break. And then last, I also want to remember Jean Watt, whose memorial was this week. Jean was a friend to all of us, but mostly, she was a friend to Newport Beach, and we all share in the fruits of her long and hard labors, so, rest in peace.
Councilmember Wigan?
I do not have a report to me.
Mayor Protem?
I have nothing to add.
Perfect. We're moving on to matters which council members best be placed on a future agenda, and this is going to be a non-discussion item. Mayor Protem O'Neill has asked that, in light of repeated waivers from the city council, consider deleting the paragraph in the city council policy F7, Inc. Other Property, designate a sub-paragraph F7 addressing bylaws of an organization. Let's take a straw vote.
That's 6-0.
Perfect. Madam Clerk, please read the notice regarding public comments on consent.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are items 1 through 14. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed on our consent calendar are considered to be routine, will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. Councilmember Clyman, do you have any items to pull from consent or conflicts to announce?
No.
Councilmember Stapleton?
I have none, but I'd be remiss if I didn't mention item number 13, another surplus, almost $12 million. Just kudos to our staff, our finance committee, our current council, our previous councils. We're just so blessed to live in a city like Newport, and taking that $12 million surplus to pay down long-term obligations and continue infrastructure and neighborhood capital improvements.
Thank you. Councilmember Grant?
None.
Councilmember Wigan?
I have none.
Mayor Protem?
I have none.
And I have a recusal from a real property interest for number six on 417 30th Street, and I have a recusal of item eight for a real property interest at 224 Marine Avenue.
All right. I move the consent calendar with item number one showing amendments to the minutes and two recusals noted by the mayor on items six and eight.
Perfect. We have a second by Councilmember Clyman. Let's go to public comments on consent calendar, items 1 through 14.
Mayor Blom, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. With regard to item 11, which is asking you to approve an agreement between the city and Newport Mesa School District regarding school resource officers, I mentioned in my written comment that the agreement you're supposed to be reviewing and approving seems to be missing page two. I just got this copy from the lobby. It's still missing page two. I haven't seen it. I don't know if you are seeing something different than I am, but I would think it would be a problem approving the agreement without having seen it. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comments on consent? Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor Blom and honorable council members. My name is Connor Medina, and I'm the Regional Public Affairs Manager for the Orange County Division of the League of California Cities, or CalCities, speaking on items four and five. But first, thanks for the opportunity to be here in beautiful Newport Beach, which happens to be the city that I live in. I'm at Newport North in Councilmember Wigan's district, and I'm not allowed to say which city is my favorite city, but I've been a proud resident for over six years now, so I'll let that speak for itself. I want to extend my congratulations first to Councilmember Grant, who, back in August, was elected by her peers to represent the 5th Supervisory District on the CalCities Orange County Division Board of Directors. Councilmember Grant, you are a really incredible voice to have on this board, and I look forward to continuing to work closely with you, your colleagues, and your staff on your city's priorities. I've already had great conversations with the city manager and some of you on advocacy related to sober living homes and other issues that are of importance to the city. I look forward to continuing those discussions. I'm also here tonight to speak on agenda items four and five on the consent calendar regarding ACA-1 and ACA-13, which were passed by the legislature earlier this year and will appear on the November 2024 ballot. As you may know, CalCities took a support position on these proposals. The council looks likely, or you're likely to take, an opposite position tonight. I just want to acknowledge the fact that while there may be different perspectives on these proposals, we are aligned far more often than we aren't when it comes to municipal policies. I don't have too much time to dive deep into either, but I am here, should you have any questions, and happy to discuss them further with you individually. I left my card. Our city clerk kindly passed out my card to you all, so you know how to reach me, available anytime for you. But briefly, as a membership-driven organization, CalCities' support for ACA-1 and 13 is informed and led by our 476 member cities. We are the largest municipal organization in the state. It's a large and diverse group, so there are going to be different perspectives, and we have processes in place to allow debate and conversations around these policies before we take action. Ultimately, a clear majority of the cities statewide are in lockstep with CalCities on this and actively want CalCities to be a leader in supporting this legislation. Regarding ACA-13, I want to make it clear that this proposal does not affect only charter cities, it applies to all cities. This is misinformation that's been pushed by the California Business Roundtable that has not swayed many municipal organizations like CSAC, like CSDA, that don't have charter cities in their membership. From their continued support, it certainly hasn't swayed CalCities, which represents not just charter cities, but all cities statewide. It is also written in that bill language that it is not intended to reverse or invalidate Proposition 13. That being said, I am running out of time, and there's certainly a lot more that we can discuss, and I wanted to take an opportunity to explain a little bit of the reasoning behind our support, and happy to really dive into the details with you anytime. You have my contact information. I'm always happy to share your feedback, too, with my leadership in Sacramento. Whenever you have feedback that you'd like me to funnel up the ranks, I'm happy to do so, and I want to make sure that all my cities in Orange County in this division are heard. I truly appreciate the privilege and the opportunity to work with your city, your amazing staff, and thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you. Any other public comments on consent calendar? Wonderful, seeing none. Any other comments up here? Let's go ahead and vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title four, item three, ordinance 2023-15, an ordinance of the City Council of City of Newport Beach approving an amendment to the Newport Village Plan Community PC 27 Development Plan to Update the Definitions and Allowed Uses Within Area 5 Retail. The motion carries 6-0.
Wonderful. Moving on to public comments on non-agenda items. Now would be the time for public comments on non-agenda items. Wonderful. Seeing, Jim? Oh, come on up. Head on up for those public comments.
I've come to discuss the abuse and usage of e-bikes in our city. We have a huge problem with children riding e-bikes in unsafe manner all over residential neighborhoods. I live in a neighborhood that is terrorized by children on e-bikes and electric motorcycles. They gather in the park and green belts in the evening, race around filming stunts in the street, light off fireworks, they slash tires, break doors, and most of this is really facilitated by the gang-like mentality that the e-bikes create. There are no consequences for these kids, because the laws in our city are woefully out of date and mismatched to the current technology. Not only are young boys riding one of three classes of e-bikes through the park, but many are operating electric motorcycles, like Cerrons, which can easily reach speeds of up to 50 miles an hour. This is a ticking time bomb, and it's only a matter of time before a juvenile operator or a small child playing at the park gets killed. San Clemente passed an e-bike ban last year on their coastal boardwalks. Lake Forest has implemented a speed limit of five miles per hour on sidewalks, paths, and walkways for electric bikes. Last month, Huntington Beach passed an ordinance that allows city police to stop anyone operating electric bike in unsafe manner and fine them up to $400 and impound their bike. Cities all around us are cracking down on this huge problem, and it's time our city does, too. The Children's Hospital of Orange County, CHOC, has Newport Beach ranked as the number one city for e-bike injuries. Top injuries treated are concussions, extremity fractures, skull fractures, and facial fractures. The average age of those injuries is 14. Let's take the best laws and ordinances from other cities and put a stop to this outrageous abuse. We need to drastically reduce the speed limit on sidewalks, paths, and walkways to five miles per hour. We need to enforce this with solar-powered speed limit signs that include radar detection and cameras. We need to put an age restriction on these bikes and not allow juveniles to control the vehicle that can cause so much damage. We should have an ordinance that allows our police to question any e-bike user that looks below the age limit, uses the bike in an unsafe manner, and give them the power to impound the e-bike and severely fine the user. The city of Newport Beach has over 27 pages, or 1,145 rents, fines, or fees, but not one dedicated to curbing this pressing issue. Let's give the police the power and tools to stop, put a stop to all the horrific injuries caused by e-bikes and halt the dramatic increase in crime involving these roaming teenage e-bike gangs involved in harassment, threats, felony vandalism, assault, and battery. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on agenda and non-agenda? Come right up, feel free. It's an open forum. We'd love to see you guys.
Good evening, council. My name is Michael Poole. I'm a resident of Newport Beach, as well as a general counsel for several HOAs. I'm here in that capacity. I work for Roseman Law as an attorney, as general counsel for many of the HOAs in Newport Beach, including Newport Hills Community Association. Coming here tonight on their behalf, we've had several different board meetings discussing this issue specifically. The previous speaker touched on many of the points that were brought up in those board meetings, so essentially, the problem with the Port Streets, if you will, or Newport Hills Community Association is phase two. There's three phases currently there. As far as enforcement, there's the city park that runs through the center of all three of these communities. So, when we're looking at enforcement from our perspective, it's very difficult for us, because we only have a very limited amount that we can do as far as the HOA. We have the CCNRs and the governing documents that allow us to do certain things if we can find violators that are causing a nuisance. However, most of these activities, as were discussed, involve these electric bikes, which allow for very quick ingress and egress throughout the community through the public park area. That seems to be the MO for most of these, I don't want to say gangs, but these large groups of teenagers that are using these bikes to sort of victimize different communities within Newport Beach. While I don't think there's any sort of panacea or, you know, one answer to all While I don't think there's any sort of panacea or, you know, one answer to all these problems, I do think some of the items that were discussed, such as lowering the speed limits or putting the speed limits in place, I know currently, within the municipal code in Newport Beach, I think it's starting at 12.54.025, it defines motorized vehicles in a certain way, 12.54.030 defines speed limits, this is for the boardwalk area, though, specifically on the peninsula, it limits speed to eight miles per hour, so as was discussed, there's certain other cities, such as San Clemente, Huntington Beach, Lake Forest, among others, in Orange County, I think Irvine as well is also currently deliberating this issue, that are taking a hard look at e-bikes because of the damage that they're causing, or potential damage is the most serious thing we're looking at here, just from what has been told to me, there have been people that have had their children essentially run down on these bicycles, these are children that are under the age of 10, as well as, as was touched before, felony vandalism where doors have been kicked in, and then it's very difficult to catch the perpetrators because they take off on these bikes, they can go upwards of 30 miles an hour, and as in the case of the Siron bikes, which are actually electric motorcycles, can reach speeds of 50 miles per hour, so it's very difficult for, you know, these residents in these communities to really do anything about this issue, so I come on behalf of my law firm, but also representing different associations to just bring this issue to the attention of the council, and we hope that you can help in this issue, thank you very much. My name again was Michael Poole, resident and attorney from Roseman Law.
Thank you, next speaker, head right on up.
My name is Gil Cottrell, I live in Harborview, basically following them, and last Saturday, spinning the wheels, doing tricks like Circle de Soleil, one foot on the bike going 45 miles an hour, threw rocks up at my window, $500, our broken window, my car, didn't know until the next day, I went, oh, give me a break, but the thing about these kids is that I bought an electric bike for my son, who's 23, and I thought, okay, so I asked the guys at the bike place, so when do you sell these bikes, what do parents do, can you sell bikes to underage kids? They said, oh, no, they have to be 16, they have to sign a waiver, the parents have to send a waiver, no, we won't let our kids ride that bike, I'm like, really? So I'm watching these kids in my neighborhood, who are all like 14 or 13, even 12, we sell helmets for a living, my wife and I, and we get all the crackheads, and people with paraplegics and people who are brain damaged for the rest of their life because they didn't wear a helmet, and I'm watching these kids drive these vehicles with no helmets, and then I watch my neighbors get, see their doors kicked in, because I'm right on the green belt, so I see everything, and with the quick getaway with the bikes, because they do their damage, they turn their lights off, turn their lights off, because if you see the lights, you can see which way they're going, number one, the rule is at night, you have to rely on when you ride a bike, so I know the police are doing their utmost to stop this stuff, they're doing a very good job, but like one of the ringleaders of these little kids, it's usually an older kid with the younger kids, and he's teaching them what to do, the one they caught was from Newport Coast, he's not even from our neighborhood, so, anyway, the fact is, they're getting faster and faster bikes, one of the kids, the ringleader, they tried to catch, but his bike was faster than the policeman's bikes that they had, and they couldn't catch him, he was too fast, but the thing is, when these things are as fast as motorcycles, and these kids don't have licenses, I mean, I had one, I was pulling in my driveway, right in front of me, I didn't even see him coming out of nowhere, because they don't know the laws, 14-year-olds don't know the laws, they were taking the driver's test in their lives, anyway, so I just thought I'd add that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other speakers out there on agenda or non-agenda items? Okay, good, all right, thank you guys very much for coming out to speak, we do appreciate it. We're moving on to the public hearing, item, item 15 is the annual review of the zoning agreement for Sierra by the Sea, Mr. Jurgis.
Thank you, Mayor Blom and city council members, good evening, I'm Simone Jurgis, your Assistant City Manager, with me, next to me is Melinda Whalen, who's Assistant Planner, and in the front row is Monique Nevarret, she's our Senior Code Enforcement Officer. This is an annual review of Sierra by the Sea, this is our 14th annual review, just this morning, we've heard from Sierra by the Sea that they intend to shut down their operations in Newport Beach, they're planning on closing down all their facilities by December 10th, so this is new information that we found out this morning, they are starting to wind down their operation, they intend to dissolve the zoning agreement, but we haven't had that conversation with them yet, but they put that in writing to us, and will work with the city attorney's office, they are also winding down the number of residents they have, right now, I think our review, our annual review, when we show it with you, is maybe about 43 residents, they're already down to 14 residents, so Mayor Blom, I could go ahead and continue with the staff presentation, or just answer questions?
I don't think we look like we need a presentation up here, anybody? No? Thanks, Lauren? Councilmember Kleiman? His first name's up here.
Thank you, so I heard the same thing, I did a little site visit yesterday and was told by some of the employees there that they were starting to kind of roll it up, that being said, they do have the right to assign, and I just want to make sure that we preserve the record and kind of, you know, still go through this process, I don't know if the operator is here, would certainly, you know...
There is somebody present.
Okay, so yeah, I'd be happy to, you know, hear a little bit more from them, and, you know, just to verify their intent and the timing, but I just want to, again, kind of be on the record to say that respectfully, I disagree with staff's assessment, in my review of the agreement, the licensing information, the inspection reports, the citing, citation records, and the calls for service, as well as my own sitewalk around the exterior of these facilities this week, you know, I just, I have a strong concern about the safety and care of the residents of these facilities, and I definitely cannot make a finding of good faith here, I just want to... Can we, can you pull up those photos? Just point out again, for the record, some of the observations that I made, and while we're pulling those up, I'll just note that the staff report didn't mention the two code enforcement cases for 2800 Lafayette Avenue, which is also a property that's controlled by this operator, and I did request the calls for service, they're extremely troubling, just since 2022, there were four overdoses, 17 responses by our fire and paramedics for medical aid, five reports for illegal parking, one in the red zone, and lots of other calls for physical fight disturbances, welfare checks, and then, of course, we have heard from some residents, some of whom I spoke to while I was walking around as well, but I just wanted, again, to have these photos for everyone to see, this was, of course, an unannounced visit, I know that staff has been required by this agreement to give them four hours' notice, and so that's a lot of time to sort of clean things up, but in just passing by and walking around, I noted violations of parking in every single facility, as well as cigarette butts, trash everywhere, people outside smoking, or in the garages with the garage doors open, smoking, again, just sort of visually observed pretty much every one of the things that they have said that they are in good faith working towards, or that they believe that they're doing a good job on, I, again, respectfully disagree. So I won't go on, since it does sound like they're looking to close their doors, but I would like to hear more from the applicant about that, and whether there is an intent to assign to another operator, or I don't know if these facilities are rented, or owned by them, I'll stop there for now.
Okay, let's go ahead and have the operator come on up, if you could, thanks.
Hello, my name is Julie Thorne from Sierra by the Sea, I'm the Director of Quality and Compliance.
Wonderful, Lauren?
Yeah, maybe you could just kind of confirm what Mr. Jurgis was sharing about the closure and what the timeline looks like, and again, whether there's any assignment of these facilities to another operator?
No, there's no assignment to any other operator, we're owned by a parent company, Acadia Healthcare, so they are ending all operations in the City of Newport Beach with substance use treatment centers, so all of our facilities, all of them will be closing down, December 10th is our closure date, and then we're winding down up until then, so progressively finishing the clients that we do have the treatment with us, and then once they complete treatment, then we are not accepting any more clients, we stopped accepting clients about two weeks ago, I believe.
And then Mr. Jurgis said that there was an intent to dissolve the agreement as well?
That, so that would come from our parent company, because they're who actually hold the agreement, and I believe that the VP of Compliance has been in contact with the Planning Office with the city, and notified of the intention to end the agreement, but that is not my decision to deliver.
Sure, great, thank you.
Councilmember Grant?
Just a quick question, do you lease all of your facilities, all the sites, or do you own prop, is any of the property owned by the parent company?
Yes, there's one property at 6110 West Oceanfront, that's owned by Acadia, the rest are all leased properties.
And is that one of the sites that's operated as a...
Yes.
But it is closing, that one's closing as well?
They're all closing.
And is there any intent, is there any information about the use of that property subsequent, is it going to be sold, or do you have any information?
No, I have no, I believe they're going to sell it, but...
Thank you.
Wonderful, seeing other comments up here, let's go to the public on this item, any public comments on this piece? Seeing none, all right, we'll bring it back up this way.
I move staff recommendation.
Thank you, staff recommendation moved by the Mayor Protem, do I have a second on this? Second then by Councilmember Grant, perfect, let's go ahead and vote.
With Councilmember Kleiman voting no, the motion carries 5-1.
Perfect, moving on to current business, item 16 is a discussion about the City Arts Commission Sculpture Exhibition Phase Nine Funding, let's move on to the staff report, Melissa.
Good evening, Mayor Blom, members of council, I am Melissa Hartson, your Library Services Director, and with me, I have Library Services Manager Rebecca Lightfoot, while I don't have a formal presentation this evening, I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Let's jump in, Mayor Protem.
Since we're talking about budget, and we've allocated a pretty significant amount of money, but I don't actually know where it all goes, do you have any unallocated budget left over right now, that has been allocated to the Arts Commission from the council?
Yes, so we do have unallocated budget within our programming, at this point in time, we do have approximately $30,000 left in programming, that is to still cover the Newport Beach Art Exhibition, and the Student Art Exhibition, and we also have about $16,000 unallocated for our professional services, and that is to cover any maintenance for public art within the city, as well as transcription services for Arts Commission meetings and art installations, I say that those are unallocated, some of those pieces will need to be funded, such as transcription of minutes and services, we will need to evaluate how much restoration will happen upon the public art, with professional services and programming, we are planning for the Newport Beach Art Exhibition currently, the Student Art Exhibition is set for the beginning of the year.
How much do you estimate those are going to cost?
Last year's art exhibition ran us approximately $20,000, the Student Art Exhibition will be very minimal, under $2,000.
So, just rough guess, you have 46 grand in unallocated, and you're estimating probably 22 of it is going to be spent, so you're looking at about 24 in true unallocated?
If you did the math that quickly, that sounds about right.
That's what I do, all right, thanks.
Councilmember Grant?
Okay, so I'd like to just dial this back for a minute, maybe add a little context, and maybe expand the conversation to the extent we can within the agenda item, about globally what's happening here, and what we're going to do tonight, what we need to do moving forward, and what's maybe happened in the past, so basically, we're looking at three things in my mind, that if I, we can't discuss all three, because they're not agendaed, but I think they all can come up under this agenda item, but we have the existing potential shortfall that we need to deal with immediately, I think we also need to come to some concepting about budgeting properly moving forward, most, from staff and also from the commission, and then I also would like to have a discussion about council policy I-10 that applies to the Arts Commission and their duties and obligations with respect to spending the city's money, so I'll just start in, and wherever I overstep, you can let me know, but as far as the shortfall goes for this particular year, for the, you know, the 2023 budget, correct me if I'm wrong, but the process, you know, and I was on the Arts Commission for eight years, five years I was the chair, so I do understand a little bit about the process, but just very generally, the process is, you submit a budget to the Finance Committee, or to the city, and it somehow works its way through, in this instance, the entire ask was not given, there was less money given than was asked for, and the Arts Commission went ahead and programmed their year, and I want to take this juncture to say that we have very, very, very good programming through the Arts Commission, these concerts, the exhibitions, everything that I've ever attended from the Arts Commission has been very, very, very well attended, and there's high compliments to be paid, I just want to make sure that there's not a frustration and a disconnect on how we fund and how we spend, which is where we are kind of tonight, so we didn't necessarily budget for everything that the Arts Commission wanted to do, and now we're at this juncture where we either have to cut back on what we're going to do, or extend additional budget, is that correct?
That is correct, in terms of, we do not have sufficient budget to program the sculpture exhibition at 10 sculptures this fiscal year.
Okay, so I understand that there's been some very creative solutions, and I admire the efforts of everybody on the commission, and maybe staff also, for trying to find that, and maybe we land there, or some combination of additional budget and reduced programming, but I think part of the problem of that is the changes that were made to I-10, I think in 2017, after I was off the Arts Commission, and I can read for you directly what I'm talking about, which is...
Can I jump in just briefly?
Yes, go ahead.
So we probably need to focus mainly on kind of this request and the funding, I think some of the larger issues as far as the council policy and that approach is probably something that has to be agendized separately, but I think you could talk about, you know, what money was allocated and what money they're requesting, and I think that that's all fine, but I think the broader policy things, I'm not sure that was properly noticed to bring it, you know, for this tonight.
Well, the only reason I bring it up is because I think that the problem with the shortfall, like extends from the what's in the I-10 policy, so if you don't want me to continue, I won't, we can wait for a later date, but I think one of the, I'll just say very generally, there's a commitment required from the Arts Commissioners to get the shortfall in funding from the community, so that's kind of where we are right now, is that if there isn't additional funding, that's the obligation of the Arts Commission under I-10, and so I do think that that comes up under this agenda item, they're asking for additional money, and that's where it's supposed to come from.
I just think that to the extent you're asking whether or not the council wants to change that policy or not...
No, I'm not, I'm not asking for that now, I realize that that's not okay, so I guess my point is, I'm supportive of the programs, but this process didn't seem to work very well this year, and so I'm just wondering how we can shore that up, and I'll let someone else speak.
Councilmember Wigan?
Yes, I'm very supportive of the sculptures, I think it's a great thing, it brings the community together, it's a good feature, I just curious, Councilmember Grant had... Councilmember Grant had brought up something that kind of perked my mind. The concerts in the park is something that the Arts Commission does. How come Parks doesn't do that? They do the movies and they do other things. How come that fell? I'm just curious, back in the history of that, where that came from, why the funding fell in your lap versus Parks?
And I don't have a good answer to that, but I believe it's because it is performing arts, and the Arts Commission is the advisory body to the council on all things related to arts within the city. So the concerts on the Green and at Marina Park are a form of performing arts, which falls under the Arts Commission's.
That makes sense. Okay. So the goal of the Arts Foundation, which is a separate entity from the city, they're created, when, when did they kind of start their formation?
In the 1980s. Is somebody here? I believe it was the 1980s. I don't have the exact date on that.
And so their kind of goal now is to kind of raise some additional funds beyond what they've been raising previously to kind of try to supplement this project? And, and they're going to add 10,000 to it. But are they looking to grow and grow and grow and build upon what they have? Or are they, are they kind of going to be similar year after year when it comes to their funding? What their proposals are, what their goals are, what their attempt to raise more money is?
So they're, just within this past year, their leadership has changed. So there is an attempt to grow and raise additional funds to help support the Arts Commission with the Sculpture Exhibition.
So that's kind of maybe they're, they're, they're starting off in this new phase of trying to raise money. And here we are in this kind of early stages of it. The, the hope is to kind of start doing a little bit greater and greater when it comes, especially to this, because of this continual shortfall. It seems to be kind of a pattern here that we're, we're addressing this little gap. And I, I think, you know, Councilmember Stapleton earlier had highlighted one of our great things that just occurred in our city, that we have a continual surplus, which is, you know, obviously goes to pay unfunded pension liabilities. And then the difference goes to some of those other programs for capital improvement. You know, arts could in one mind be a capital improvement. So, you know, we could, you know, sit up here and kind of debate $24,000 is relatively a tiny fractional number. But we do have some really great ambitions in the city. You know, we got a library lecture hall that some want to build. We've got all of these grandiose ideas, again, maybe the high, high level stuff here. But, you know, I would love to have the Arts Commission maybe think strategically outside the box for this potential gap that we continuously have. Is the foundation going to be the ones that's going to handle this? Or can we maybe partner with our local schools and decide, hey, two of these sculptures? Maybe we should have Newport Harbor High School and CDM come up with some program that maybe the school district can fund and get some local students who are working on their arts projects or build sculptures and bring this new level of engagement to the city. And maybe that could perk the interest of the Arts Foundation at a local level and say, hey, this is a great opportunity for us to partner with our schools, partner with our local students, partner with the Arts Foundation, partner with the arts community and say, hey, we're doing these great things for the schools, but we're also doing these great things for the city. So, look, I, I, I want to support this. I think 24,000 is, you know, this is a problem that we keep coming back to have to address at this council. We already had the budget process. We should move on and say, hey, eight is good. But I don't want to set a precedent, but I'd like to find something that we can tackle this issue and not have to come back next year and do this over again. So I would be supportive of the 10 paying the additional money, but I don't want to come back here next, next year. I don't want to do this drill, this exercise. So either figure it out in the budget, get the Arts Foundation to raise more money, find a local partner that can do this locally and raise the money so that the two, the gap of the two that we've got here between the eight and the 10, we can find somebody else that can help fund it and partner with some, some local entities. Maybe it's not the schools. Maybe it's some other group of kids. Maybe it's OCC. Maybe it's something in Orange County. But let's, there's got to be somebody else who really takes an interest in this because this stuff's cool if you're really paying attention, but maybe not enough people pay attention to it. So advertise more. Let's not.
So I think, again, the, the larger issue of the council policies and kind of the ongoing, that's not really before the council tonight, and it wasn't noticed under the Brown Act. So I think if we have that larger discussion, that's probably something that would have to happen separately.
Yeah, and this is just suggestions. I'm just thinking outside the box for us later. But let's, let's, let's get this done with and, and move on so we don't have to deal with it again.
Councilmember Stapleton.
I can't believe Councilman Wagen, in all of that between CDM and Newport Harbor, you didn't mention anything about Battle of the Bay this last week. So we'll leave it at that. There you go. Is there, is there someone who can speak on behalf or speak in direction? Can we talk about the foundation or no? The connection between the Arts Foundation and the Arts Commission?
Well, I really think what was noticed here tonight is, is the quest for the $24,000, not some of these like, these broader issues. But that's something we could put out on in a future agenda if someone wanted to A1 it. But that's just not really here before the council tonight.
Okay. Well, I'm supportive of 24,000. I feel like there's plenty of people in this community that could have checked for that, so I don't want to continue to belabor this. I love the fact, and I'm proud of the fact that the city of Newport Beach invests in their public arts. I love pulling into the city hall and seeing the art sculpture. I would love to be engaged in a conversation about working with the foundation. There's plenty of people in this community that can help with that. But certainly, I will echo everyone's sentiments up here that we can do better, and we should all work together on that.
Mayor Protem.
I'm going to echo a few things Mr. Wagen just said, which is there's an entire budget process that we've gone through, adopted, and the Arts Commission has had the amount of money that they knew they needed or they had the entire year. And that's when, when the council creates a budget framework, you got to stay within the budget framework. And to be fair, it sounds like they, to a certain extent, did. Because if there's 46,000 right now in unallocated amounts, 20 is anticipated plus two. That leaves 24. So if they need, if they, if they needed that much money, then they needed to decide to, to keep within that framework. We expect that of literally every department we, we, we delegate money to. There's nothing special about anyone unless there's a direction from council to do so, to spend more. And that's, that's where we're at. And then to Mr. Stapleton's point, yes, there are thousands and tens of thousands of people in this community that could kind of check, and they don't. It's been true for years, and it's been the, the issue that has been popped up over and over and over again. And that's, and I, I won't go back to the council policies because, yes, I was on the council when we adopted the changes to I-10. That one passed pretty overwhelmingly on the council, and it was a good policy to make that change. But, but where we are now, though, is, and then one last, one last point, agreed on the surplus, Mr. Wagen. I agree completely. Just a quick reminder, the other half of that on the neighborhood enhancement funds, that's all one-time money, and all of this is ongoing money. So it just, it bothers me as chairman of the Finance Committee to have a budget allocation made at the council level and then come to us saying we don't have enough when they've known the amount that they had the entire time. And they either need to cut back, or they need to go out and, and request the funding from another source. That, that other source obviously hasn't materialized. There's just not the support. There just isn't. And we should be recognizing that the private money on that is voluntary. Tax dollars are not. And we need to be doing a little bit better on it than, than, than what we're talking about right now.
Councilmember Grant.
So I'm just going to try and restate, staying on the agenda item, that I don't think that the budget process was properly applied in this circumstance with respect to policy I-10, the existing policy I-10 without changing it. So that's where my sort of disconnect comes with this item, is not so much that I think that there's not a lot of value that comes to us from the Arts Commission, and that there might need to be additional funds, whether, you know, we agree. I, I do agree with Councilmember or Mayor Protem O'Neil that the budget is the budget. Everybody lives with it. That's, it's set, you know, that's the way it should be, other than extenuating circumstances, which those aren't occurring here. But I do think that there's a different disconnect here. And specifically, that I-10 says something that we didn't do. And I think that that's why we get to this point every fall, maybe, is that we aren't really identifying the right way to deal with this, you know, budgeting for this particular enterprise. So I'd like to say that in I-10, it says there will be $55,000 provided each year. The budget was definitely higher than that. So this idea in I-10 that any additional funds, it says, from the reserve fund shall be matched equally by the community, is also in I-10. This is our existing policy. I'm not talking about changing it. I'm just talking about how this budget was applied. It just doesn't seem like we're doing what we say we're doing, and it's confusing. So.
All right. Before we go to public comments, there's a couple of pieces I just want to chat about up here real quick. Basically, what's in front of us right now are three recommendations to look at this shortfall. And we'll, we'll read these, so we're all on the same page. The first is to authorize staff to execute a budget amendment. So give them the money. The second is to maintain the current budgeted funding level and install eight sculptures. So a change from what we're doing, a fiscally smart decision, if you don't have enough money, to do something that you can do from a business perspective. I actually like that because I can't ask that many people for money. In order to reallocate funds within the total budget for the arts, which from our director, we've heard, might be an available funding source. So I, I like the conversation up here. I think it's great. We have some passion about the arts. We want to keep these things going. I've actually been at almost every sculpt, every sculpture unveiling since I was elected, and we haven't had this issue up here. We haven't had shortfalls. They've managed it within themselves. Maybe there have been shortfalls on paper, but they haven't been to get the sculptures done. I think what the Mayor Protem is saying is right. This is the budget we put forth. And this is the main issue I have, is that we, we work on this for a long time. So I don't think it was a flawed process. I actually think it was a great process. I think sometimes you're right. The new director and the new boards that come in, they see a past decision, and they want it better in the future. And so that's the best challenge here yet. Let's make it better. Let's find those foundation dollars and put fire under there to get some private sector money. When we go through the budgeting process in this next cycle, you're right. You know what you want. You know what programs you want to do. Let's make those our goal and try to fund those. Right now, it's really tough for us to sit here and say, we don't have money. We need more money. This is what we wanted for it. The process is over, but we know it. So can you guys just give it to us? And I don't think any of you would use that in any of your business acumen either. You would look back and say, okay, where do we cut down? Where can we keep up that level of service that's expected and move forward? Maybe there's something we can do in this point. And I think that's part of the role of so many of these committees, is to look at what they're given, not what they want, and be able to execute within that. And then next year, hope for more. And that's kind of the point I meant. It's not about loving or not loving the Sculpture Garden or wanting more art or not wanting more art in Newport. I, I do. I actually want the most art in Newport, probably amazingly so to some of my colleagues up here. I love it. But it doesn't matter when it comes to how much money we have and how much money we get to spend. So those are my general thoughts on this. We can go to Councilmember Wagen real quick, and then I want to go out to public.
Would we be able to reach out if we went with eight tonight? Would we be able to reach out to some of the artists who are out there and ask them to stay an additional timeframe? Or will they have to leave? You know, you cycle them year over year, a certain amount stay, and then you rotate in half, and then the other half leave. Would you, do you think there's an appetite for any of the artists that are currently out there to stay an additional length of period of time in order to keep the same amount in the garden versus losing two, if we only go with eight for this period?
The, that was actually discussed at the last Arts Commission meeting. And how do you determine which, which artists you would extend that invitation to? How much more would an honorarium be offered to those artists? Who would be willing to stay, if anybody would be willing to stay? There are multiple factors to take into consideration if you're going to try to extend contracts with the existing artists that are already in the Sculpture Garden.
I guess for my colleagues, my only fear is if you go to eight, and you kind of set this precedent, well, we've been doing 10 and 10 and 10, and now we're going to eight, and then the program kind of starts getting fractured. And then what happens if we come back, you know, future years, say, oh, you know, we only want to do eight? And then, you know, we, I, you can hear what I'm saying.
Let's go to the public. Public comments on this item. Thanks.
Good evening. My name's Maureen Flanagan, and I am Chair of the Newport Beach City Arts Commission. I've spoken to just about every one of the city council members regarding this situation. We would not be in this position if the request for 45,000 had been approved last year. We received no increase, and in fact, we haven't had an increase in our budget in five years. In 2017, 18, and 2018, 19, our budget was 275,000. We now receive $26,000 less than we did five years ago. We all know inflation is with us, and it is sticky. Prices have increased, yet we receive $26,000 less than we did five years ago. In my discussion with several of you, I was asked to find other funding sources. I attempt to do just that, but was advised by the city that policy A2 does not allow a city commission to raise funds. The Newport Beach Art Foundation graciously granted us 10,000 this year, as they have in the past. Our ask is simple. Fill the gap for this year and approve an increase in our budget in the next cycle. If you choose not to fund the gap, there will be two empty pads in the Sculpture Garden, which will look unfinished. But more importantly, you're setting a precedent to make our museum without walls less than the stellar attraction it has been for residents and visitors to Newport Beach since the first installation in 2014. We all want Newport Beach to remain as beautiful and vibrant as it has. Don't diminish the Sculpture Garden. Fund the gap. You ask about the 24,000. We have another project on the books to do wrapping of utility boxes, like the city of Costa Mesa has done. That's what we are earmarked those funds for.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mayor Blom, members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. I support the request from the Arts Commission to fund the Sculpture Garden as it has been. I assume that was the thought when the council approved the budget. In my experience, the budget is so big, it has so many items in it, that the exact amount going for this was probably not very well publicly scrutinized. I cannot predict exactly which way the council is going to go on this. I do recommend that this be funded as requested. And I apologize for not suggesting this to the Arts Commission. Going to eight, I think, would be a very bad idea. It's not a good option. There, there is an intermediate thought that I have, which is a substantial part of the budget is actually going to what Melissa called the honorariums, given to the artists. I would think the artists like the exposure of being able to show their works here and the recognition that that gives them. We're currently offering them an amount of $5,000 each to display their works here. Comes to $50,000. I don't know personally how that compares to what artists are offered in other similar exhibitions elsewhere in the country or the world. But there is probably a little flexibility on that, and that amount could be lowered so that within some intermediate budget, you could still have 10 and slightly smaller honorariums. But the request from the Arts Commission is the one that I support because I think that the city has established this as an attraction. It has, and it seems unseemly for the council not to be supporting it as it has been. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this item?
Yes, council and Mayor Blom. My name is John Blom, and I'm a recent appointed Arts Commissioner. I inherited what's going on right now. And I would like to say that originally, the Sculpture Garden, I thought, was a joke when I first, when it first happened. But I think maybe that was because the, the bunnies, I didn't like the bunnies. But the bunnies are gone. Okay? Except for one, I think the city bought one and put it over by the library. If you walk through the Sculpture Garden, like I, I have done several times since I've been on the Arts Commission, it's a very wonderful place. A lot of thought and energy went into developing it, and the architecture, the landscaping and everything is so wonderful. energy went into developing it, and the architecture, the landscaping and everything is so wonderful. I would like to say that going from 10 to eight, that means that there would be 18. Actually, there should probably be 40 sculptures there, because the, the whole thing is so well done. And the, actually, the, the honorarium of $5,000, I was shocked to find out that the artists have to pay for their own transportation of the sculptures to and from the Sculpture Garden. So in some cases, that might eat up the whole $5,000, because those things are, some of them are very heavy for transport. So I don't think that we should, and I don't think that that honorarium has been raised in years. So if anything, it should be increased. And I would just implore the council to just, you know, unloose the purse strings a little bit, and give the money. And we actually need more money for advertising. And bring them, have the, be able to get the city, I mean, I would venture to say that the, the residents of Newport Beach, there's probably 80% of them don't even know that the Sculpture Garden exists. So that, it needs to be promoted more. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public speakers on this item? Okay, we'll bring it back up here real quick. Councilmember Grant.
So I am not in favor of empty pads out in the sculpture collection. But I'm also not in favor of extending additional budget resources when we knew what the budget was. So I'm having a little problem finding a good landing spot here. But Maureen, you said something about another project that you're reserving funds for, that the wrapping of the utility boxes. So can you elaborate a little? Is that something that you could put off for a year, so that we can get past this hurdle, and maybe relook at what's going on with the arts budget?
We talked about it last year. We, we started the project this year. My vice chair is not here tonight. He's in charge of that project. If, if we don't get the funding, then we have, we have no ability to do anything else. Period. So no new project, is what you're asking.
I'm trying to find a place that I can, something I can vote for. So I'd rather, to me, the sculpture collection is, you know, something that I don't want to reduce. And if we're talking about spending money on a new project, that might be something that I would, you know, I, if I were, you know, in charge of it, I might consider not doing. Would that shore up the shortfall if you didn't do that project?
Yes, it would.
Okay, so that's, that alternative wasn't presented, but that's another alternative that could possibly occur?
Could possibly.
It's a third option.
Oh, just, that's, that's the project that's the reallocation, is the wrapping?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Councilmember Wagen.
Yes, I was going to say the exact same thing. I, I, we're not Costa Mesa. I get that you want to wrap the utilities, but, you know, if that's the difference, that we can fund this?
There is money currently available to reallocate. It would be at the expense of doing something else. But at this point, we do not have the funding for 10 sculptures, which was already programmed for this fiscal year.
If the funding is there and eliminate that project, I'm, I'm supportive of that as well.
Mayor Protem.
Yeah, that, that was, that was sort of the point I was trying to make from the beginning, and I do appreciate that. So I'm going to make a motion for staff's recommendation at three, the reallocation of $24,000 to cover the shortfall, to allow for 10 sculpture, sculptures to go in.
Can I just have a point of clarification after you get a second?
You can go ahead.
I just want to ask our library services director, is that going to, by this motion, will that affect anything else in, in your programming that you would be of concern with?
This would be the exact same thing that we did last year to fund the sculpture exhibition. We were $24,000 short last fiscal year. We reallocated programming and professional services monies to fund the Sculpture Garden for, at 10 sculptures.
But it won't affect other things that you think you'll need or want to do, or, you know, beyond this other idea that Councilmember Grant and I just heard from the chair?
In terms of what we have on the book. Correct. Yes.
Okay, okay. Yes, I'll second.
Let's vote.
The motion carries 6-0.
Madam Clerk, please read the announcement for motions for reconsideration.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Are there any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none. Tonight, we're in a journey in memory of Richard Scoop Kohler. Councilmember Wagen's going to take that.
Yes, tonight, we adjourn in the memory of Richard Scoop Kohler, a longtime photojournalist in our community who recently passed away at age 82. Scoop was born in New York, and his family moved to Newport Beach in the late 1950s. He attended Newport Harbor High School, where he owned his eye for taking pictures as a photographer for the school newspaper. After graduating high school in 1959, he worked as a photographer for the Newport Beach News Press, which later became The Daily Pilot. Scoop was usually the first photographer at traffic accidents, fires, and other emergency incidences, or incidents, sorry. The, this habit of arriving first at scenes earned him the nickname Scoop. During 20 years with The Pilot, he covered the comings and goings of residents, politicians, and civil servants in Newport Beach, Costa Mesa, and surrounding cities. He photographed memorable news incidents in numerous professional college and high school sporting events throughout the years. After leaving The Daily Pilot in 1986, he continued his photography career at the Los Angeles Times until 2006. He continued to work as a freelance photographer for the Orange County Register, right up until this year, still responding at all hours and contributing photographs. Over a nearly seven-decade career, Scoop won numerous awards from prestigious journalism organizations, including the National Newspaper Association, the California Newspapers Publishers Association, the Associated Press, the Press Photographers of the Greater Los Angeles, and the Orange County Press Club. Scoop was widely respected for his photo, for his professionalism and friendliness at any news incident he responded to. In fact, the strong relationships he developed among first responders earned him induction as an honorary member of the Newport Beach Police Department's Retirees Association. This is a tremendous honor for anyone who is not a member of law enforcement. Along with his tremendous photography and photographic history, Scoop leaves behind a family he cared about deeply. He is survived by three children, five grandchildren, three siblings, and many, many friends. His wife of 52 years, Beryl, preceded him in death last year. And information on his memorial service is pending. I think his son is, is in the audience here. So thank you for your father's legacy here in Newport Beach.
Thank you. We are adjourned.